Everyone, excuse me. Hello? We're gonna start, so you give us some peace. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wareham Board of Appeals for tonight, March 11, 2020. It is 6:30 PM, and we are at room 320 at the multi-service center. I'm gonna make a call the meeting to order, make a roll call to my far-right, Veronica Devenese, our clerk, Jim Akabachi. My far-left is Jake Morrison, our town planner, Ken Buckland, myself, the chair. Nazir Kalasi also present, professional engineer consultant for the town, Mr. Charles Rowley. Before we start, do you have any minutes?
Yeah, we do. Minister of Fair this afternoon.
I've had an opportunity to review the minutes before the meeting, find them to be accurate. I'm happy to make a motion to approve them as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay, before we go forward, for those who is new at this process, this is a five-board member. However, we short one member. Next time we meet on the 25th, we'll have, hopefully, we'll have a fifth member. You have the right to be heard with five members. So the way it works, if you choose to go with four members, you have to get four out of four. If there's five board member, you have to get four votes out of five. What we do tonight, we have to open the public hearing, and we'll continue it if you choose to continue with, or you could go with the four. So which you consent will continue under the 25th. So for who, whoever don't wanna...
Tonight, that affects Lucky Goat Brewery.
Okay. Oh, there's no new public hearing?
The other ones are not, do not require four-member vote.
Why?
Because there are minor modifications.
Which one is this? Oh, the continued. All right, so we'll get to this after, so this has been opened, so we'll get to that. And then, there's no new public hearing, so I guess, anyone here for new public hearing? I don't assume there is. It's not on the agenda.
No, there's no new public hearings. Next, April 8th, you'll have a lot of public hearings, and hopefully, we have a full board complement at that point.
All right, so with that being said, so we're gonna move to 13-19, Nurea, former MaxiGas, request for site plan approval, minor modification map 108, 2416 Cranberry Highway LLC. All right, so just your name for the record. I believe that this hearing's been approved, so you're just coming for modification. We need your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening. My name is Tom Healy. I'm with Nurea Energy, and we're located at 326 Clock Street in Worcester, Massachusetts.
And I'm Jim Bernardino with Bowler Engineering, 352 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Massachusetts.
Okay, did you do the original plan?
No, we did not. My colleague Jesse Johnson did the original permitting through your board. I took over the project with Nurea. We're the same company. I just, Nurea's one of my clients that I've worked with closely in the past, so maintaining that relationship, kind of moving the project forward with that. With that, honestly, I want to give a quick overview of who you are, and I could dive into the plan changes.
Sure, yeah. Nurea Energy, we're based out of Worcester. We operate roughly 125 gas stations throughout New England. The reason we're here tonight is because we had purchased five locations in southeast Mass from New England Farms. One of them actually is operating under our name on Cranberry Highway right now, the mobile station. So with that, we also went into an agreement on this property, this MaxiGas property, which was previously permitted through New England Farms, and we're gonna be the tenant there, leasing that location. So we just took the plan that was approved and made some minor modifications to it so that it aligns more with what our typical prototype is for a gas station. So Jim will explain the changes. We've got a couple of plans to show and with an overlay, so you can see the changes for what we're proposing versus what was originally approved.
You doing outside changes, the parking lot and stuff?
Yes, there are some changes, and Jim will detail that.
Okay, go ahead. Before I go forward, have you forwarded this, these changes to the town engineer, have you discussed with Mr. Rowley at all?
No, we have not discussed that with the town engineer at this point. We do believe that they're very minor in nature, and we'll go over those this evening. We did, however, forward those, the plan to the fire department to ensure that there is adequate emergency vehicle circulations around the property. Today, he responded back, I think...
You have a letter.
Yeah, you have a letter? Okay, no longer. I don't think he had any issues with the proposed layout. So what's on the board in front of you is what was previously approved. Basically, to address some of Nurea's program and how they operate their facilities, some minor modifications to the plan have been made. One notable is the building footprint, the... Side by side, lower levels as approved, up above is the proposed, what was approved previously was 5,300, just over 5,300 square feet of a building footprint. The modification increased the building square footage to 5,600 square feet, just so that the internal operations and the way the store is laid out fits with their overall program that they have in their stores. So that was an increase of 282 square feet. Additionally, what was another change that occurred was we added MPD, basically, another fuel dispenser. What was approved was five, but however, we're proposing six. We did that within virtually the same canopy footprint as what was previously approved. Before, they had very wide-open lanes with a bypass between the two. With these single-lane configurations, you really don't need that escape lane. There's no one behind you that finished pumping first and wanted to sneak through. So we're able to reduce the center-to-center width of the fuel dispensers and provide that six, what we call an MPD, multi-product dispenser, within the same footprint of the overall canopy. We shifted the canopy approximately, I think, about seven feet closer to the Cranberry Highway to allow for some enhanced circulation along the front of the building. I've also provided a red line to the board, which kind of overlays the approved plan versus the, what's currently being proposed. I do have a real quick sketch. It's a little confusing, but basically, what we did was, for the parking configuration, we actually shifted that further, it's actually south on Cranberry Highway, to allow for the modified building footprint. The building footprint actually got a little bit wider, but narrower, meaning deeper, it got deeper, the width decreased. So what we were able to do is, we added a landscaped area along the side here of the building. We proposed the relocation of the dumpster facility away from the main road, tried to get it out of sight. We moved it around to the back at the end of the parking stalls, and we're proposing to introduce an outdoor patio area. We have some protective bollards, little fenced area, so that customers can get a nice coffee, sit outside in the sun when it's a nice hour. All in all, there was very minor adjustments to the overall footprint development. You can see, we added some pavement down in the front where the pink is, but all the green is where we actually tidied it up and added some landscaping. So all in all, we're actually decreasing the impervious area that was on the site previously by about 650 square feet. Other site plan modifications that are going to be applied to this project we haven't done yet is just maybe shifting a catch base in a couple feet to accommodate a new curb line. So other than those site plan modifications that I just went over real briefly, everything else in the site plan package is going to remain virtually unchanged, other than shifting a catch base in here or there by a couple feet. One other item that was different as well, I'll show you, is Nurea does have their own brand elevation. So previously, there was a very generic elevation that was provided with proposal, and I think we gave you some 11-by-17 colored copies as well. This brand is consistent with their overall program that they've been implementing on all of the other sites that are currently under the operation of Nurea. Pretty basic block with some architectural elements throughout. I'm not getting great detail with that, but we just wanted to bring it to the board's attention that that is a difference that you will see, that is being presented. Obviously, there was preliminary elevations that were provided during the approval process, and the applicant would be looking to modify those. Other than that, those are the significant site plan changes. The overall footprint hasn't expanded much. The increased building square footage did require an additional parking spot. However, we add another dispenser, and the modification to the parking spot, just to the north side, we were able to get an additional parking space as well. So we're compliant with the parking, even though we increased the overall square footage by just over, just shy of 300 square feet. With that, that's a real broad overview of our site plan changes, and we think they're minor in nature, but obviously, we want a consensus of the board on that as well.
So do you want to say anything? Would you like to make comment?
No, I think Jim described the changes pretty well. We like to, you know, get the trash enclosure out of view. That's why we moved it over to the backside of the parking, on the left side of the building. And the changes, the addition of the fuel dispenser, that is our typical layout when we put in a row of fuel dispensers under canopy. We have the standard spacing that we typically put in between the fuel islands. So it works well. It works at all of our other locations. That's why we tighten it up a little bit, and we like to have that additional dispenser just so at peak times, you know, for the morning rush hour, that nobody, there are two more fueling positions available at that time, so it alleviates if anybody's waiting.
I'll put my input in this myself, and then we pass it by the town engineer and the board member. I do understand that the dispenser is considered a parking space. However, as it is, when we started this project, on that corner has a lot of impact on traffic. However, we did agree, we did like, apparently, the board, we did like the Cape-looking building and the way the architectural plan they presented, the overall picture that worked with us. I personally, I know it's not the Cape here, well, in this town, I don't know where you guys from, Worcester, we like to see like Cape-looking, just like the mobile down the street. I believe Nurea just acquired that property, right?
Yeah, correct.
So we like, personally, I like to see something like this. 200 square feet bigger, I don't mind, but I do like that first proposal, the way the architecture was proposed versus this building. It looks, I don't, I personally, I would not like to see this building there. I don't know how the board feel about it. And just to let you know, right now, off the subject, you need three out of four here, so you don't need all four members for modification. If we agree, it's a minor modification. So regarding the additional dispenser, like the pump, so you add in two cars, I know it's adding to parking, but it's adding a lot more traffic, I believe. I mean, as it is, with last time, we pushed it with five. We'll hear from the board member, and I'm sure personally, I would like to see the input of the town engineer for future, like, discussion. But I would like first to hear from the board, see if they would like to hear as a minor modification or major modification. If the board wish to go with minor modification, like I said, three out of four, and he doesn't have to advertise it and change the site plan. If the board feel it's not extreme, more than minor modification, then we have to go with a full public hearing again. So I'll just start with Veronica, what she thinks.
Well, I want to start by saying I do also have a little bit of concern with increasing the number of pumps that are there, and I'd like to compare it to some of the other stations that are around, just for my own edification. Whether or not it's a minor modification, my question is actually to the chairman. So we can choose, as a minor modification, do we have the ability to choose the modifications that are made, or are we accepting it as a whole?
No, you don't have to accept everything. You say, "I'll agree with this," and I agree, for instance, no dispenser, increasing the square footage, adding the parking lot.
In that case, it's minor.
So you could pick and choose.
Yeah, then I would say minor modification.
Okay, Jimmy?
Where's the other one on Cranberry Highway that you just acquired? Which one is it, the mobile unit?
It's the mobile station. It's 2501 Cranberry.
Across from Mr. Chris.
Morse Lumber. Okay, New England Farms across from Morse Lumber.
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's my only question.
Jake?
I don't have a problem with this at all. I'd like to hear from Charlie. I don't think if the fire department, if they don't have a problem with how this is laid out, if they can get in and out efficiently without any issues, I don't have a problem with even the extra pump. If the fire department has a problem with it, then it's a problem.
All right. I think if the board feels this way, well, let's decide on a minor modification first. Are you okay with minor modification?
Yes.
All right. I disagree with minor modification, but I guess it carries a minor modification, you get three out of four. Going back to the subject, just to clarify, the fire department looked, my opinion, looked at it as a safety matter. They don't look like, they want to make sure the truck goes inside, they could get out, hook up the hose, it's all what they care. They don't, they don't care for the traffic impact on that corner. This becomes town engineer matter and planning and zoning. So that's why I want to refer this subject. The town engineer might says, "It's minimal, I'm okay with it." I'm not an engineer, so if he says, he gives you his blessing and stuff, I'm okay with it. He gives his comment. If we feel it's okay, if it's not okay, we'll go by that. So I'm gonna pass it to Charlie, see what he thinks.
There are evidently seven changes that have been proposed. I'd at least like the opportunity to look at the plan and compare it to the old one, just to see what it is. Based on what I've heard, they don't seem to be significant, but nevertheless, I'd like the opportunity. I just can't say yes or no based on five minutes without having a chance to study it.
Did you get a, did you get a copy of this?
No.
Yes.
I've got the, I've got the large set.
Oh.
Which I can read much better than that, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so you wish to continue, or you want to take...
I'd like, I'd like time enough to continue. I could report back to you at your next meeting, certainly. It won't take me longer than that, but I just don't want to do it in five minutes.
Right, I agree, I agree. Okay, so hearing Charlie, what do you like to see changed?
Myself?
Yeah, these gentlemen can go fix it, so they come back for once.
Well, based on some of the comments that you made, I don't remember what the exterior looked like on the original plan set. Is it in here?
Go back, go back, stay, go back. And I'll go to the second floor. There you go.
Oh, there we go. But there's no front elevation, right? Oh, yes, there is. Personally, I do like this building, the first one, better. However, that being said, I do think that the building that you have proposed does match some of what is already across the street for like Autozone and those buildings that have gone in recently. Other than that, I am glad that we're gonna have this continued, because like I said, I do want to be able to look at some other gas stations, and traffic flow is a concern with the added pump.
Jimmy?
I've always said if somebody wants to wear pink socks, it's okay with me. It's their choice. I hate to tell people what color hat to wear. So I know the town, I know a lot of people want to see the Cape Cod look. To me, that's, you know, that's too much socialistic or communistic or too much, so I don't care what the design is. It's a business decision, in my opinion.
If it would help the board, I have a photograph here of an actual building with that design that we constructed up in Lewiston, Maine, in the past couple of years. If you'd like to pass that.
I know these companies, so. Anything about the sizes, like the extra 200 square feet, the dispenser...
I'm fine with that.
The dispenser, the parking lot shifting.
I mean, the look of it, too, honestly, it's kind of tucked back, so it's not going to be right out to the front, so I don't think it'll be a huge...
I do, I do understand what Veronica said about the looks, looks like across the street, but it's a freestanding building. I would like to see the Cape Cod look, but that's perfectly fine.
I know there's a lot of people in town that feel the same way you do, too, Nazir, so.
Is anyone in the public want to have an input in this matter? I hear none, like in favor or against, I hear none. So you guys willing to come back on the 25th?
Charlie, you have enough on the 25th? Yeah. If I just may, we don't have any issue coming back on the 25th, but I just, you know, minor modification is something that I've always interpreted as, we agree it's a minor modification that we could work out some of the technical details with staff, as well as their consulting engineers. If that's something that's possible, you know, we'd ask you to consider that, but if you do want us to come back and, you know, give the results of our communications, by all means, we're open to that. But I just want to ask that question of the board, to see what...
Like I said, I don't make the call by myself. If the board, you get three out of four, I guess you can. So would you...
I don't know if you want to do that, or you just want to come back. Is it the 25th of...
Right, but if the board, if you get three out of four of us, for you to make a decision tonight, it is what it is. So how you feel about it? You feel to give them okay pending for them discussing with Charlie, or coming back on the 25th?
Really, I'd like to see you come back, because it will give me a chance to do the homework that I was talking about.
I'm so neutral, I feel as though we owe Charlie the time to look, so.
Right, okay.
We've already got a member that wants to come back.
Could we vote tonight, pending that, everything, if, when Charlie looks at it, if he agrees...
That's what they asked.
Yeah, I would do that. I wouldn't vote tonight.
Right, but if two people said no, it dies.
Well, and that's... So if we vote tonight, then Charlie looks at it and wants to make some modifications, and we can do that, but then he'll come back, right?
I'm not okay with that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Because this, we don't know what that's going to be at this point, and you've suggested it's minor modification. It still has to do with the special permit. It's going to require adjustment of the document and so forth. I would appreciate if we at least, let's get it all on the table for the next meeting.
Like, I feel this way, and at least Veronica feels this way, and...
Nope, that's fine.
...so I guess most likely...
Best, best to come back, I think.
I have no problem working in the meantime with the applicant's engineer, that's not a problem.
Yeah, you guys should exchange your business cards. We'll do that, and I was not involved with having the traffic study done, but I believe the comment from the traffic engineer was that adding the additional fuel dispenser doesn't, doesn't drive up the traffic generation when they use their criteria for doing a traffic report. I'll get that confirmed. I know that's a concern of yours, but we, again, we typically, we put that in not because we're expecting that it's gonna, oh, they have a sixth fuel dispenser, so, you know, that's gonna generate more business.
I don't think it's going to cause people to drive down 495, because there's an extra fuel pump there.
It's really because of, at the peak times, we might, we'd like to make sure that we've got enough fueling spaces so that we don't have people queuing up and they can easily find a fueling position. That's, that's the truth of it. We'll, we'll get that information back to you through our traffic engineer also.
All right, very well. So can I have motion to continue 13-19 to the 25th?
Continue. Just set the date for next meeting.
Okay. Next meeting on the 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Good luck on your venture, or your acquisition or...
Charlie, have a good night.
You too, thank you. Take care.
Oh, have a good night. All right, 38-18, Sunrise Development.
Yes, I am, yep.
Sunrise Development, minor modification.
The EOR is not here at the moment. He was gonna be here at 7 o'clock. He said he called in, that he won't be here for another four or five minutes, but he will speak of it.
What font is this?
Pardon me?
Which location is that, 2382, is this?
That's the solar site.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
That's the solar site.
Oh, behind the storage over there.
Yes, that's exactly, in the industrial park there from...
So you want to table it until then?
Well, if I could just have a couple of minutes here.
Yeah, no problem. All right, we go forward, we'll continue with the continued public hearing. 3-20 Lucky Goat Brewery, 379 Main Street. The public hearing's still, still open, so we just need, name an address for the record, and we'll proceed.
Lucky Go Brewing, 379 Main Street, Wareham, Massachusetts, 02571.
Your name, please?
Aaron Perry.
Okay, ma'am.
Caitlin Hurd.
Endel P. Biddy.
And Bill Lockwood, Lockwood Architects.
All right, so if, just let me, when we opened that hearing last time, did you have four members or five?
Four.
Four, like, we had, we did only four?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so you want to proceed?
Yes.
Just let us know where we at now.
Okay. We presented the project last, at the last hearing, and we came away with a decision that they, you had voted to grant the variance for the use, and you had asked us to get you additional information on fire, water, and sewer, of which we have provided in the supplemental package that you're now getting passed out. Taking from the top down, we have modified our plan slightly to comport with the GAF plan, so the landscaping is the same. The number of spaces, we had a discrepancy previously between nine and eight. We have taken five, five seats out of the tavern to be a 40-seat taproom, thus requiring only eight spaces. We've synced up the landscaping with the GAF plan and reduced the size of the patio likewise. We've been to the fire department, we've applied for their review. I believe that they, they said they would contact you guys directly. We have been to the water department. We have a letter from the water department dated today, as well as the last water usage for the building when it was a fish market a number of years ago. And lastly, we have met a series of times with the sewer, Guy Cabanera, that's at the sewer department, and we have a summary of the sewage composition, and we have scheduled a hearing with the sewer board on March 19th, which Guy thinks we will have no issues with.
All right, let me...
Our load is quite small.
We don't understand it, so we'd just like to hear, personally, like to hear from the sewer department.
We got it.
On the 19th, right? I'll be allowed to leave the floor, okay. I guess we have it here.
That just happened today.
Oh, they just sent it today?
They just sent that today.
Yeah, I didn't have to check to my email.
We got the same thing from the water department here, too.
All right, good. Let me, let me ask you a quick question. I know last time we discussed the site plan, about, there was a dealer, car dealer. Did you guys work out the planning board?
There was a, there was a subsequent plan, which I, last time I, in my ignorance, was not aware of, that did not show the cars.
Do we have a copy of the subsequent plan?
You have a copy of which?
The one that does not show the cars? I mean, we have this, we have this that you gave us tonight, shows the building, but it doesn't show any of the parking. it doesn't show any of the parking.
This, this is the GAF, this is the landscape. Was our, I think our biggest concern was how they were going to separate and where we were going to park people the last time, the last meeting.
Right.
And all that good stuff.
So these, these are Lucky Goat parking spaces now?
These are Lucky Goat parking spaces, these are...
These are not?
These are not.
Okay. Just for the record, because people can't see what we're looking at, the parking for the Lucky Goat will be up against the building, and the parking for the auto sales business will be in front of the old gas station, I'm calling it, was originally a gas station.
But I don't see a revisions date here with that, from the engineer?
September 18th.
Yeah, but, what was the other plan? When was that dated?
I have it here, hold it, bear with me.
How did you guys revise it from September, since we just heard it last week?
Because they...
I mean, if it's signed on 9/19, I don't understand how it was revised, and we opened the public hearing a couple of weeks ago.
They hadn't, they hadn't supplied us this, they supplied us the old, the plan showing...
This is the other plan here. So this is 7/18.
That's a July plan, let's see what that was. Can we see the other side of this? Yeah, this is the one that we were presented. This is from July, and this is one from September.
That was the one I had in my possession, I apologize, I didn't know it was like that.
Okay, so, okay, so the, the one you submit and you're showing us now, so this is that, the proposed parking lot for that building?
That's already gone through site plan review.
It's already gone to site plan, with the planning board and everything?
That's correct. Site plan, okay.
They do not see the Lucky Goat Brewing, but they did see the, the parking lot layout that's, that's shown on the plan.
Okay.
If...
Yeah, go ahead.
Nazzy, the, the last time we were here, maybe I misunderstood what you had commented on regarding the vehicle sales permit allowed at that site, that there had to be a decision made on what was going to happen there, not, so it was kind of like, it sounded to me like they had to choose, the landowner had to choose what they wanted to accept as a permit, that, an active permit, so that the sales of cars could not also be conducted at the same time at a later date.
Correct. Can Mr. Madden speak on this?
Hopefully, sure.
Can you speak on this? You retain on it, or no?
Oh, I'm happy to speak on behalf of Gateway Motors.
The owner, the landlord, want to come forward, if you don't mind? Just because we, little, I, I'm confused, anyway, what's this plan is for, and how did it come about, or how you guys, have a seat, just a name for the record, if you don't mind.
Well, I haven't had the opportunity to see the plans, other than the ones that we presented to the planning board previously.
This one on 9/19? You signed them on 9/19?
Sure.
That's the one?
That's one of, that's, that's plan five of six is complete plan set, this is the landscaping plan that represents the landscaping that we proposed for the used car dealership on the adjacent building.
You want, if you don't mind, he wants to hear this. Yeah, okay. Let me ask you a quick question, Bill. These plans, the, the thing we want to know, I know a car dealership's been approved, where is the office for the car dealership? You were at this meeting.
The, the office building for the...
Right now, as of today, where is that?
The approved location for the car dealership is on the adjacent building.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with the...
It's not the old fish market, it's the building to the right of that, as we're looking at it from the street. That's the, that's the location that is the approved office and location of the car dealership.
Okay, and the previous plan, there were two cars displayed on the seafood building. Where?
We showed, we showed cars displayed in the front of the, the fish mar, I'll call it the fish market building, just for convenience. We showed cars there, but that plan was superseded by the plan where the old garage was, so we moved everything to the, to the opposite side of the site. We have display areas inside the building, and, like, eight spaces out in the front of the building, as well as a, a dedicated parking lot for customers of the, of the dealership.
All right, so this is the plan we're going by, so this supersede the other plan, you're saying?
I would, I would, I would say yes, it does. It's got a later date.
All right, okay. So Veronica, what do you think?
That makes it clear to me, I, I wasn't clear on what was happening with the car sales and the brewery. I think we just wanted to be clear on the two distinct, separate entities, and they have their own space and...
Exactly, and the display area for the vehicles for sale, while there are some on the site of the building, say, to the right, there's maybe 10 in front and four or five inside the building, there's also spaces behind the fish market that are to be used for display, they were separate and distinct from the parking that we identified for the fish market building.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, yeah. It's as clear as beer to me, I'm all set.
Jake?
No questions.
Ken, you want to say anything, I have input on that?
You're going to dedicate those spaces to the Lucky Goat, the ones on, shown on the plan?
Yeah, along the building.
Yeah, along, along the building to the side there.
Did, did we have a 53G for this process? Did they have to open a 53G?
I don't recall, do you?
This is the first time I've seen anything.
No, certainly they do not have a 53G.
All right. We need to have the town engineer review it, because it's a special permit, we granted you the variance, so you could have a brewery, but we still have to go through a special permit process, so we'd just like to have the engineer a quick look at it, the town engineer, see if any comment, because we're not engineers. So, but apparently the water's okay with it, the sewer's okay with it, everyone's okay with it, we just want to make sure the parking lot drafted properly, so on. Unless, if it was, I, I don't, I don't know, maybe somebody could correct me, because it was a fish market and a restaurant, can we ask, is it pretty much the same use, or can we ask for...
No, it was an abandoned use, it's been vacant for more than two years.
But it's allowed use? Oh, no, it's not?
The brewery is not allowed use, that's why you granted the use variance.
Right.
Was, was that property, so the fish market building, was that always owned by the same owner as the, the, sorry, the surrounding?
It, it was one parcel of land with multiple buildings located on it, and, if I just might add, with respect to the parking and what have you, the, you know, it was approved for site plan review with the parking, the way it's shown on, on the current plan, with the, with the parking for the, was for the car lot at the time, against the side of, against the side of the building. You know, there was no additional impervious area, there was drainage at the rear of the lot, you know, and we did receive approval for the car lot at that location, and then subsequent to that approval, it was decided by the, the owners that they decide, they, they prefer to move the building more to the, I guess it would be considered the south. So that's when we reapplied to the planning board, went through site plan review, modified the site plan to move the retail car sales class two license to that other site. There, there were no site improvements proposed originally with the car dealership at the fish market, you know, we just really delineated parking spaces on the surface of the ground, immediately adjacent to it, showed some parking spaces in the front of the, two display spaces in the front of the building, and enhanced that space with, with landscaping that's shown on the plan that I just, that I just looked at, so, you know, I, you know, certainly it's up to the board to decide how to do things, but in my view, everything had been approved for the, for the same essential use of parking as is being proposed right now.
So the parking was approved for the fish market as for like...
For the cardio, eight spaces or so.
But you revised it for retail slash restaurant, maybe?
That, that use wasn't even considered, as I remember it.
No, it was not, there was...
There was, nothing to do with this building was ever considered by the planning board, it was all with respect to the adjacent building, and the revision that they made to utilize that second building as the main display area and sales area, with a strip along the side that's next to the CVS and the Dunkin' Donuts, for a secondary display area for cars that people could go see. I don't recall that there was ever any consideration with this building with respect to this use.
No, there was not.
Okay.
At that time, at that time, there was not.
All right. So, I think we're going to need some recommendation from the town engineer, but I don't want you to be disappointed, you are allowed to open a brewery, you get the variance, so you could do it, but you might have to do a little modification with the parking lot or whatever town. I, I don't think the building has to change, but we have to hear from the town engineer, just so things don't get confused on top of each other, so...
Hold on a second. When we first came here a month ago, you told us what exactly you needed, you told us you need sewer, water, fire, at no point did you bring up an engineer needing to see the plan.
I did mention about the, that, the dealership, I don't, I know what I talked about.
Yeah, the dealership was mentioned.
I did tell you there was a dealership, I moved from this plan, and there was car displayed, and you have to figure out the issue. And I said, like I said, now Mr. Madden had explained that he moved the dealership to the side, which is, I'm okay, perfectly fine with me, it doesn't affect my personal decision, however, being a part of the approval of the planning board, the town planner saying it wasn't, so it's Mr. Rowley. If the board wishes to grant it to you, it's, it's different story, but personally, I'm, I'm not comfortable to plant some, grant something that town planner saying on, or the engineer. I don't know if the board agrees with me or not, but it, it's not, it's only a little bit of time, so Mr. Rowley can review it, and he can sort out the, the, the planning issue, the separating of the permit, we're not saying, we do understand, like I said, that the dealers been moved, but so...
I have a question.
Yes.
To the applicant and to you, first to the applicant, how much time do you need in that building, prepare, to prepare the building to be open to the public?
We've probably got about three months or so.
Three months?
Yeah. Because it's, it's pretty empty.
Okay. And during that three months, and now I'm speaking to both you and Chair, during that three months, do you think it's possible for the engineer to review the plan, and you guys to agree on what the parking is going to ultimately be?
I think that's fair.
So is it possible for us to give these guys some kind of a signal that they can go forward and start spending money on that building? So they, I, I hate to see them sitting here waiting two or three more weeks to start construction.
That's our biggest fear.
I have no problem.
We're paying a lot of money for storage right now.
So I'm just trying to make it clear.
I wouldn't have voted if I made...
We appreciate that, Jim. We will need a, I'm sorry.
Sir, let me finish. I wouldn't have voted yes for the variance, if I'm not in agreement with your brewery, but somehow we have to have some kind of order in town, some kind of plans, some, somehow as close as possible to the bylaw. We're not saying exactly by the bylaw, but somehow as close as possible, and, and help you out and help the town, that's all. We're not saying we don't want you, we'd love you to be there. And I'm glad the sewer said it's okay, I was worried about sewer.
I was too.
You know? So Mr. Lockwood, what do you want to say?
Well, I, we really need to get a building permit, and currently the building permit is contingent upon...
Right.
Decision of this board. If the, this board could give some sort of word to the building department, and we can do interior renovations, I think, you know, as long as they know that, what we're doing.
Interior work, it can be done, however, I'm not saying if we deny you, if for some reason the board turned down the project, or you guys disagree with the conditions that the town want to put, you, you waste your money, but you could, I don't think you...
We understand it would be working at risk, yeah.
What's that?
We understand that it would be working at risk, yeah.
Right. I mean, I don't, I mean, can they pull a permit to make, fix, put the building partition and stuff? I don't see, I don't think the building code provide you from...
What, what, what we're down to is the parking, if I, if I...
It's site plan, right, we don't care what they do inside, it's site plan.
So, the property seems big enough to me, that somehow the landlord is going to yield space, they're going to get adequate parking.
Yes, I'm sure.
So, I, I'm, I'm just inclined to say, let's let them go out of here tonight, thinking they can, or not thinking, knowing they can go get their permit, and at their own risk and peril, if Charlie says, hey, you know, you need to put a 14-story parking garage back there, and it's going to cost you 27 million, you guys say that makes the project financially unfeasible, you started at your own risk and peril. Now, he may only want 14 stories, not 27, but to understand my point.
We can probably pull off 14.
I exaggerate sometimes, but my point is...
We know Mr. Rowley to be a reasonable man.
That, that, you know, you guys have got to iron out the parking with him, if he...
Parking, landscape, and all these things.
I shouldn't say, if he, when I'm not throwing the burden of, of everything on him, the board starts to...
Sounds like it.
But, well, we, we want to depend on your opinion.
Well, I'll, I'll be glad to give you my opinion in a minute.
Your opinion is, I know, opinions are like candy bars, everybody has one, but, you, I just soon see them go out of here tonight and go get their permit and get to work. I just think in the next three months, no matter what Charlie finds on the plan, they can come up with parking. Go ahead. Can I offer something on parking? You know, the zoning district is Wareham Village One. There's a number of restaurants and facilities that are similar in nature to, to this, to this operation that are in Wareham Village One zoning district, that don't have the benefit of even providing six or eight or one parking space for that matter. You know, without going into detail about the, the exact location of the spaces, you know, the Wareham Village, the Wareham Village District in itself has a number of parking spaces, right down next to the fire station, behind the gas station, where the, where the water department office is, there's got to be parking, there's parking for a train station there, it's public parking, Wareham Village One District. There's parking for the people that live in the apartments across the street, there's parking that people might use to go to Mama, Mama Mary's, how about over there at the, the, the parking space, the parking lot between Cafe American and the parking that's used in the back on Merchant's Way for El Mariachi. So, I mean, the village district just by its nature provides parking for these types of uses. So I don't think there's anything specific in the zoning bylaw, and I didn't look at it, I come completely unprepared to discuss about parking, but I don't think there's anything in the, the bylaw that specifically requires us to place X amount of parking spaces, one per four seats, for, for each seat in those, in those areas, I mean, on that particular site. So I think that, you know, the board really should consider what the zoning bylaw really says, and, and what it allows, and make a direct comparison on the, the type of uses that, that are consistent with the village district. You know, I think that the surface is paved, it exists, it has a drainage area in the rear of the parking area, there's no need to provide any additional hard surface, handicap accessibility is provided, handicap parking spaces that meet the handicap code are provided at the front of this building, so I mean, I think it's, you know, I think it's, at least in my... You make a good point, if there's no requirement for parking for the use, if, if, if our bylaw in fact doesn't call for parking, it's, it's a valid point.
I mean, I think it does.
It's not specifically...
It does call for parking.
Does or does not?
One per five, I believe.
I'm sorry, Ken.
One per, one per five seats.
They do have the parking, but not specifically the parking as special permit, but if the board is okay with it, I'm okay with it.
The parking in the bylaw is pretty specific, it allows the, any board great latitude in determining what the parking can be used, they don't want to provide excessive parking for certain areas, and certainly you don't want to provide a minimum amount of parking for certain types of uses in that parking bylaw. So there's great flexibility that can be, can be granted with respect to that.
Like I said, you, in the plan, you have plenty of parking, I'm not disagreeing with the parking, you have plenty, you only have 12 seats, you only need three parking for the customers, you know, and you have plenty, and you have the handicap and employee, the quad, thing of an... I'm talking about is the, as special permit as a whole. But again, if the place existed, the board is okay with it, and you guys wanna iron it out with the town, with the, Mr. Rowley, you can go, I don't have a problem.
The standard on the special permit is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
I do, I do, I do agree.
So, I mean, can, can we make a finding that it is not more substantially detrimental to allow...
It's definitely not the more detrimental neighborhood, it's an improvement.
But that's a decision you guys would make.
It's, it's an improvement of the area, we all agree on that. That's why we granted the variance to begin with.
I understand.
So, what do you like, what do you like to see?
Well, the only thing with this parking, and for me, the parking and traffic flow and clear delineation of each area is foremost on my mind, and if that means that the planning board has to review it, I'm fine with that. I understand that it holds things up. If that is not what we're discussing...
The planning board had already approved this.
So, they, they approve that, then I'm, I'm kind of not sure what, what does the planning board have to approve that they haven't?
It wasn't fish market when they approved it.
I don't think it's, it's got nothing to do with the planning board, John.
Not to do.
Oh, okay, so I missed something.
Originally, there was, the plan they brought us before, it showed the cars displayed. So, apparently, they gave us the wrong plans. We, it was a part of, we thought that was a part of the car dealership, but they had already amended the plan, it looks like three months later with the planning board, and moved the dealership to the right.
Okay.
That's what they brought us tonight.
And, and the site plan that you have before you, this landscaping plan, it was part of the set that was approved by the planning board. The planning board looked at this with the idea that there was a different use within this building, they did not have a use variance, so they couldn't say that it was gonna be a brewery, but the rest of it was a combination of uses on the site, with the principal use being the used car dealership.
So, I guess my question is, I think, maybe that's the point you're trying to make, Nazir, that there is a process to be followed? Is that, I don't know.
Apparently, they did back in September.
So, if they followed it.
If you guys okay with the, what they given us, I'm okay with it.
I think what happened...
They have landscaping, they have everything.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I think what happened is we got the, the wrong plans originally, and it looked like the, the car dealership was attacked, you know, it was like one in, you know, the same thing.
We followed the wrong map, and we ended up in the wrong place.
And here we are, here we are now, a few meetings later.
Can we hear from Charlie on what he thinks about this situation?
He can.
Well, I'm just looking at the plan. First of all, I think we need to understand that there was a special permit, site plan review that was done by the planning board. There was no consideration given to this use specifically at that time, because at the time, nobody knew what it was going to be. I'm looking at his plan, and the front of it says there are 34 patio seats, 45 taproom seats.
You're looking at the old plan, Charlie?
Well, I'm looking at the plan that was given to me.
Do you need this?
They just gave us this tonight.
They're giving you the wrong map and sending you to the wrong state, too.
All right, so we've got 40 taproom seats, and we've got 20 patio seats, that's a total of 60. So, 60 divided by 12, by 5 is what? 12?
12.
So, we need 12 parking spaces, and they need to be dedicated to this use. Where is that shown on that site plan? I'm just curious, because I don't know.
Okay, I guess, I counted, I counted the front, I'm sorry, I didn't have my glasses, I didn't see the 40 seats, yeah. So, you got 60 seats.
You got 60 seats, and one parking space per every five seats, so that's 12. So, I'm saying, on the site plan that was approved by the planning board under the special permit, where are the 12 parking spaces dedicated or could be dedicated to this use?
Out of curiosity, where are El Mariachi's parking spaces?
Right. Let me, before we get...
They have zero.
Listen, I totally understand, and we believe it's not detrimental, we, we don't have, and to be fair to everyone on Main Street, you don't have, personally, I don't think you should have all the parking lot, like, so we're not gonna penalize you to have ev, by the book where everyone else doesn't have.
Right.
I do believe this, and it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood to have, just only parking lot. But if there's other issues like stuff, what else you think?
Well, there is an existing special permit for the site.
By the planning board.
And it was not designated just to one side of it. The entire special permit is for that particular piece of property. So, it seems to me that that special permit needs to be modified to allow this change. There was never any separation between the buildings, it was, it was all by the same owner.
So, what you tell us, they could go to planning board, they don't need us, they could get this.
No, because I don't know what they asked for the variance for, was it just the use?
The use.
So, you, you grant a use variance, they take the use variance and go to the planning board, then to a modification for the special permit they already have to allow that use. I, I don't see how you can do it any other way. And the, the zoning requirement says for restaurant use, which is basically what this is, it says one parking space for every five seats. So, that seems to me the criteria that you have to set. The only thing it says in the bylaw is that where there's no specific parking identified, it's up to the building inspector to make that determination. But it seems to me, you're putting seats here where people are gonna drink beer and eat pretzels or whatever else, so it's a restaurant.
I believe the zoning board still have the, the authority to decide on the, on the parking lot if the board wishes. I mean, if some, if somebody wants to appeal it, they could appeal it, or the planning board, I don't know.
One of the things you're, you're not doing, not suggesting, is changing the site plan. What you're doing is, is asking, is determining whether or not the use is appropriate for the site plan as, as originally approved. So, you can make that determination, that condition use variance, that the, the number of parking spaces shown on the, on the plan are those that are dedicated to the use and are acceptable to the...
I don't have a problem with it to begin with. I just want, don't want that somebody appealing it for these German men, and it blows on their face, that's all. I want it done right. I don't wanna issue a permit to it, and then the planning board says, wait a minute, for instance, that was a dealership, but I, we know that, so that will sort it out.
The, the planning board saw this plan, and the only thing they didn't have was the use designated within the building. And you have done that by the use variance.
Right.
So, at this point, are we making a determination that the plan that's there...
We could accept it if we wish.
Accepted for the use that we're...
If the planning board wants to appeal something, that's, that become their, their thing, that's not us.
Could we, could we accept it with the eight spaces showing it?
Before, yeah, if we, if we think it's not detrimental.
And strongly recommend that they somehow find use of four more spaces at a later date, or during the next three months?
The back of the building belongs to you, too, no? In the back, or no?
Yeah.
Belongs to the landlord, yes.
Right, I mean, it's part of the...
Yeah. And I, that sounds like a reasonable suggestion, Jim. And I was just talking to Kendall, that if facilitates the process going forward, willing to remove the patio seating from the petition at this point, until...
Come for a minor modification?
Come back for a minor modification after we've talked to the planning board, or and done whatever else we need to do to perfect the, the number, number and ratio.
I'd like to hear Charlie's comments, but I'd also like to see you guys walk out of here tonight, and go to the building inspector tomorrow and get a permit.
I, I agree with both of those things.
If, if it's your position that you're gonna grant something other than what the bylaw requires, then there's nothing for me to look at, because they're not making any changes to the site, or giving the planning board an opportunity to look at it, so there's no reason for me to comment on anything.
So, that saves them some money in a 53G account.
Whether it's according to the law or not may be another issue.
Well, I guess if somebody appeals them, they lose it.
Yeah, but...
You're, you're within your, your bounds if the number of seats meets the number of dedicated parking spaces on, shown on the plan.
So, what do you plan to tell us?
So, it conditioned the approval on the basis, the use variance on the basis of, how many parking spaces do you have on the side there?
Eight.
Eight designated.
So, 40 seats.
For 40 seats.
Forty seats until they come and show us more parking spaces as a modification to the...
Just draw some more parking in the back and come back, and we'll, and the board willing, I guess, as I hear, they wanna give you a permit to walk away.
So, what do you think about a motion to grant with a restriction of only 40 seats?
Without the patio, until they come with more plans with more parking.
Then they go, they get working, and if by some miracle of miracles, before the three months worth of construction is done, they've acquired four or five more spaces, and they wanna add more seats out on the patio, we can make a decision then.
That works for you?
That's fair.
That's fine, yeah.
We're good with that.
And if you could work with the landlord to give you a little bit more parking in the back, I think, like, that's what the board leaning towards.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you guys gonna agree to do this landscaping plan as presented?
Yeah, that's what, but, that's what the site plan review has got, so I'm not sure who's gonna be planning what, but someone's gonna plan it, I...
All right, is anyone in the audience wanna speak in favor of this project? Against?
Any audience in favor?
In favor, yes. You wanna come forward? Just, just your name for the record, she wants to write it down.
Joseph Sorrow, S.A.U.R.O.
Yeah, here's the gentleman.
Yeah, he has to hear it, yes.
Get close to one of any microphone and say...
Joseph Sorrow, S.A.U.R.O.
In favor or opposed?
In favor.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, anyone else in favor? Against?
Got another in favor, couple, come on up, state your name.
Yeah.
Speak into the microphone, say your name, for or against.
We only wanna hear your voice, because the lady who takes the racket, she has to write it down.
It's Timothy McCann, and I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you.
We don't have seats that spin around, and we don't vote, you're not gonna pass on to Hollywood or anything.
Yes, go ahead, ma'am, just you.
I am Christine Thompson, and I'm in favor.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, come on.
Allega Stilo, I'm in favor.
Thank you. All right. Okay, anybody against? No? All right. All right, so if we are not, you guys wanna add anything before we close the public hearing?
I think we're good.
All right, so can we have a motion?
Take a motion to close the public hearing?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, pause, abstain.
I don't have a draft decision to, to sign tonight on this one.
Oh, you don't?
Can we come sign tomorrow?
Well, we could vote based on the draft.
Can the clerk sign for the board?
No.
Okay.
No, you'd have to come in tomorrow.
We'll come in tomorrow, but we'll go sign, we'll take the time to go sign.
Jake, can you get down there and sign?
Yeah.
Veronica?
But anyway, you need the 20 days, so if we go tomorrow, on Monday, it doesn't matter. So, but I'll make an effort to go tomorrow myself if...
We appreciate that.
...the board agrees to it.
Thank you.
So...
So, now we just gotta figure out what we agreed to do.
You gotta do a finding first. So, what do you find? You find it not detrimental to the neighborhood?
I, I make a motion that it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, and...
As presented?
As presented, and should be, well, no, as, yeah, as presented, as modified.
Right, and we, and the condition is that we do it without the patio now, if they come up with the, with more parking lot, you can...
We will construct the patio, but not put, put city there.
Yeah, you could construct, but no seat, right? And...
Yeah, more people can stand on a patio than sit anyway.
Right.
You have a point.
So, also, so... And that is, I guess, based on the plan revised by Mr., by Lockwood Architects on, by March 10, 2020, and based on the plan submitted, my GF Engineering on September 19, 2019. So, any, would you like, you guys would like to add any other conditions other than that?
Standard conditions.
With standard conditions, of course. All right, so more, Jim's motion, do I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, oppose, abstain. It carries, so he's gonna, Mr. Buckland's gonna write the drafted decision?
Mm-hmm.
If you like to start, would you be able to do it tomorrow?
Yes.
Like, what time, if they come by and look at it?
I'd say 11 o'clock.
Say, come like noon, look at it, if you like, if you have any comment, let them know. I personally will make an effort to go there, sign it tomorrow, if, if they would, that would be great, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck with your project. Did you have, regarding that, or something new?
I said we're ready.
Oh, you're ready?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, yeah. You recognize me now?
Yes. Oops, sorry.
Oh, you need this, too.
Oh, yeah, that's what I had to find.
Yeah, there's more for that one.
All right. Oh, okay. All right, we go back, just one second. Come forward, please, you come forward, let me let some else.
No. No.
Are you here for minor modification?
Yes.
Okay, so name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Christopher King with Atlantic Design Engineers, and we are the engineer for construction for the applicant, NG North America.
Okay. Are these the plans you submitted tonight, or these previous?
So, if you, if, if you'd like, I could just give you a quick, not to believe everything, I'll just give you a quick history.
Yeah, give us quick things, so everybody get refreshed, yes.
And so, this project was originally approved by the board in 2018, at which point in time, GAF was the permitting engineer. The developer at the time was Sunrise Development. Since that point in time, NG North America has acquired the rights, basically purchased the property and the permits, if you will. And NG had contacted us to basically produce building permit drawings based on the approved permit set that you folks had reviewed and approved. So, in January of this year, we created the building permit set using the GAF design, basically capturing, you know, the, the spirit of the design, the details of the design, created the building permit set which was submitted, and we received our building permit. If you, one of the conditions within your original decision was that we have a pre-construction meeting with the town-selected engineer, being Mr. Rowley, funds put in the 53G account to allow for inspections during construction. And when we met on-site with Mr. Rowley, we brought out our building permit plan, and he had noticed that it was not, in fact, the GAF plan. So, as a matter of procedure, at that point in time, he had recommended that we submit the revised plans that were approved for the building permit dated January 24th to you folks, so that you could vote to approve them as part of the special permit, so that there's continuity with the permit and the plans moving forward. Out on-site, we were talking about some of the specifics regarding the design itself, and there was some comments made in regards to the stormwater system. So, again, the pre-construction meeting was our initial mobilization. They did some, once, you know, again, during permitting, there's a level of due diligence, and then once the project starts construction, you do a lot more site-specific testing, which we had done. And based on the depths of the top glacial till layer, it was determined that the site would generate in excess of 10,000 cubic yards due to the amount of material we needed to dig out, and then replace with a sand and gravel mix in all of the basins, and that[1727.73] And that would also include some of the subgrade for the road, which will need to get compaction and it's gonna be difficult in the glacial till material. And so, I, I guess twofold, first, you know, back to the-
Let me, if I may.
Yes.
So first of all, for, you wanna be the engineer on record? This-
Yes.
You taking GF, you taking over the-
Correct, we're, correct.
And the next thing you asking for, to modify the drainage?
No, no, so I'm just kinda giving an overview of how we got to this point. So, let me just back up one step for clarity. The, the January twenty-fourth plan set was review, was submitted to you folks and was originally going to be on a previous agenda. Mr. Rowley had reviewed that set and issued a letter recommending that the board approve them, deeming them consistent with the GAF design.
Correct.
So that was, you know, that's ultimately our goal. But in addition to that, what we've done is, again, we've determined that we have a pretty good excess of material. It equates to, you know, over seven hundred dump trucks to kinda put it into perspective. And so, the contractor, who the gentleman with me tonight is Matt Williams with ISI, Interconnection Systems Incorporated, they're doing the actual site work. And then, so they had asked, well, can we put this material anywhere else on-site without impacting the design or affecting the approvals essentially? So, we had worked together, both Atlantic Design and NG being the operator, and we had taken the January twenty-fourth set that Mr. Rowley has already confirmed isn't, you know, consistent with the GAF design. And we've taken the excess cubic yardage and we've taken this portion of the site here, at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
And we're proposing to basically raise that in an effort to balance the site and so we're not having to haul off so much material.
Was it in the back, does it dip down?
No, this is all a hill that goes all uphill here.
Right.
And so we're doing the same thing, the grades in this area
Yeah.
have been adjusted anywhere from a foot to three feet in some areas, but they're relatively isolated. We're basically, where, you know, we're still meeting existing grade at the perimeter, we're not expanding the fence, we're not expanding the limit of clearing, we're not expanding the footprint. All we're really doing is taking one area of the site and raising it up and, in an effort to, again, balance the earthwork operation.
Let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Starting at the project, what's the elevation? At the beginning?
At the beginning?
Yeah. Right there, yeah, right there.
I wanna say it's probably down around sixty?
What I wanna try to get to from the, from the beginning to the end, what's, what's the difference in elevation? Right now, as it stands.
It's about forty feet?
Forty? And what are you trying to cut down?
So, you know, under the, under the approved plan, if you will, the grade at the road right here is seventy-seven and we were going up to the top of the hill and we were proposing one twelve and a half. So let's call it one thirteen. So, that's thirty-six feet from the beginning to the end. Under what we're proposing now, we're only raising the top of the road up to a one fourteen. So we're really only raising it by two feet at the back of the hill. There is this one fifteen here.
Yeah.
We're just trying to bury it, but we're coming back down, so we're really limiting raising the grade at the perimeter because that's what allows us to work within the existing or previously approved footprint, which was, you know, we felt was important, just reviewing the permitting.
So more or less, you're playing with the grade two feet?
Yeah, two, two plus or minus, yeah, correct.
So you're taking two feet from here, putting it here?
Correct.
On one side, right?
Yeah.
Which side, sir?
On one side, just-
On one side, okay.
Yeah.
Did this, are you moving the drainage area where the perk tests were done?
So, so there, so the drainage basins, there are three drainage basins in the area that were, in the areas that were raised.
That were appro, where was approved originally? I remember very well the project, it's very particular with the drainage. Wherever the perk test, we cannot move this drainage with the site plan.
Drainage basins did not move, they just raised in elevation by a foot.
The bottom of the basin's not moving? The bottom, the, whatever, like, the bottom of the basin?
The material on the drainage area.
I don't care on top and the bottom.
The bottom is, is raising a foot of the basin, but the basin itself is in the same location, it's the same size, the same shape in, in the area where it's raised.
So if you, if you dig in the bottom of the basin, say, at ninety, at elevation ninety, are you going eighty-nine, you telling me? Or you going to ninety-one?
If the bottom of my-
It's a lot of plans that I just, I know, but say, say the bottom of your drainage is a nine, propose a ninety. Originally it was just a GF.
Yeah.
So now you proposing ninety-one or eighty-nine?
Correct, yeah, exactly, we're proposing ninety-one.
Why you proposing higher?
Because that's, we're lifting everything up because that's where we're putting the material. In the basins though, we're required to remove and provide a two-foot of an overdig in the bottom of the basin. So although the basin is raising a foot, we're not raising it by depositing that material in the basin because we're still obligated to provide the two feet of the sand and gravel mix that was part of the original design.
Okay, my concern is, we don't wanna, like, disturb the integrity of the drainage design that was approved. It was a lot of concern about the drainage and we, we went by Mr. Man, Mr. Broddrick, I believe, Bob?
Bob Rogers.
Bob Rogers. He is professional engineer, we agreed to his design and stuff, so I'm very particular, myself, that we, and Mr. Rowley, I believe that time did not agree with it. However, he's responsible, Mr. Broddrick's responsible for his plan, so it has to be built exactly what we agreed on, just to be fair to Mr. Rowley because we respected his professional decision as well as Mr. Broddrick's decision. And Mr. Bro, Broddrick's or Broddrick's?
Rogers.
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 Mr. Rogers, responsible for his sake, stamp and design. So personally, if you wanna change any of that design, I would like to review this through the engineer. I'm not gonna make the decision in this. When did that arrive? All right, we're gonna hear it from Mr. Rowley himself. Because I didn't see this, I just seen that, so we didn't, did you send an email today?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so that's okay, we can discuss it now.
Sure.
Let me hear from Veronica what she thinks. She wasn't here at the original plan, but did you get the scoop of it?
I did, and I guess, I'm not too up on solar projects, but is that where you're gonna have the panels? They're gonna be raised up two feet, the whole thing is where you're gonna put the panels?
Yes.
Yes.
Veronica, if I may, it's not, it's not the matter of where the panels go, they, the matter of the drainage and the grade. The panel's been approved, the numbers and stuff-
The site plan was approved as presented, correct? And it's changing by two feet?
Yeah, but they're not moving the panels' location and stuff, but they're changing the grade.
Let, let me-
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, but the panel elevation is increased by two feet, is that not correct? If the ground is increased by two feet?
Correct, then in turn, the panels would, would follow the topography, correct?
Correct, okay, so my question is about, you know, your visuals and surrounding and, I, I don't actually know where that location is and what-
Sure, I can, I can briefly describe it if, if you like, it's, it's on the Cranberry Highway, it's like a-
Can I explain it to her? Because she, you don't live here. Across, you know where the Concord Electric, across from Wallaka?
Wallaka?
Yes. Joe Barbosa.
Moving company.
You know Joe Barbosa?
Yes.
Going to West Wareham, the first side, you go up the hill. All these industrial buildings way up in the back.
If you're inside of Great Hill Mobile Home Park, if that helps.
Oh, yes.
If you're going from here, just before the fire station on the right.
Okay.
You know the Meadowland Fire Station on the right, just before Federal Furnace Road?
Pretty much behind-
You'd think I didn't live here, but I-
You know where Cumberland Farms is?
Yes.
Behind Joe Barbosa.
Back from Cumberland Farms.
Oh, that fire station there?
That fire station there.
Yes.
In West Wareham?
And then come back from that, and that's the lot. There's an industrial building there.
Oh, yes, 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 okay.
The hand community storage, pretty much.
All right, so that makes that clear for where that is. So I guess my question is, all of your fencing, all of your requirements that you have to do are also being raised by two feet? Correct, your fencing and everything else?
The fencing, the fencing is on the edge, so that's gonna remain at the grade that it was because we're tying in at the perimeter. Really, again, I wasn't involved in the initial permitting, but my understanding is on the eastern edge down here, adjacent to the Mobile Home Park, is where we were required to provide the full fifty-foot and leave the existing vegetation. In addition to that, this project is including additional plantings in the holes
So-
to, to, to enhance the existing screening and meets the required setbacks.
So the screening is my concern with raising it two feet? And your screening is not gonna be raised two feet, is what you're saying?
Well, I mean, it's, they're trees, so, you know, the existing vegetation out there is tall enough so that the two, the two feet that we're raising internally is not gonna impact any of the adjacent sightlines due to the topography and the existing, between the fifty-foot strip that we're leaving and the additional plantings that we're gonna be filling in any holes. You know, screening has, this adjustment is not gonna impact that. If anything, the adjustment is gonna be improvement from a construction presence standpoint, just in that it's gonna significantly reduce the amount of truck traffic right at the project frontage. Really, that's what this is, you know, again, we did some on-site testing once we were mobilized after the pre-construction meeting and actually did the earthwork analysis after it was determined where the unsuitable soils were gonna be and how much of it was going to need to be removed and replaced. And of, of course, it also comes down to logistics as well, but from an overall standpoint to the surrounding neighborhood and consistent with the findings of the original permit, you know, we would think this modification will be somewhat welcome just in the sense that, again, the amount of material that we're already approved to haul out of here equates to just over seven hundred dump trucks. And being able to eliminate that, I think, will be a win-win for, for both parties. Where, with, like I mentioned, this was, the, the change, the, the building permit plan and asking the board to accept those as part of the original special permit came up, well, we were already essentially mobilizing and doing the pre-construction meeting with Mr. Rowley. So we've already, our limit of work is staked out, we're already doing tree clearing out there and anticipate, are hoping to move dirt within a couple weeks. And so, you know, we certainly respect the board's request to have Mr. Rowley take a look at everything. You know, I'm very familiar with the original design that GAF did and I think that this is certainly consistent with that design. Talking with Mr. Rowley preliminarily before he was able to put his reviewing hat on, I think we could possibly make some tweaks which would improve upon it. But, you know, as far as raise, you know, the, the request to raise the site in an effort to balance the, the fill, you know, doesn't change the design per se. The ponds still have the same amount of volume, they still have the same capacity, they still have that same two feet of the entire bottom area with the stone trench wick. And, you know, the, not to mention the fact that these ponds are, you know, based on the previous design when you take a look at the numbers, appear to be significantly overdesigned. You know, we're not looking to reduce that, we're just looking really to, to balance the site and really make construction go a little bit faster and a little bit easier.
All right. Again, here's the deal, this is, they're asking for minor modification. We're gonna listen to Mr. Rowley, we have to decide if it's a minor or major. And he needs three R, three R four to decide if it's a minor, so. You guys wanna add anything before Mr. Rowley? No, okay, Mr. Charlie, please.
If, if Mr. King is comfortable with the amount of research that he did with what was done for the investigation before, then basically you're looking at the same plan. I don't see any difference. On the other hand, I stand by the letter that I wrote originally and I don't think that if the plan is substantially the same as it was, that it improves the plan specifically or that it satisfies my concerns. If you recall, when they did the infiltration test that I requested them to do, they did not do those infiltration tests in the most dense soil, which was down four to five feet. They did them up higher. In my opinion, that gave them a false sense of security as to what they had. So, be that as it may, the plan was approved and Atlantic Design has taken the same plan and is working with that same plan. So I would hold them to the same degree of responsibility as I would with GAF, where they, the engineers, that are looking at this at this point. It's gonna be up to them, they have a professional responsibility to, to do their own due diligence and be satisfied that it works. I'm hoping that it does. But I'm not suggesting to you as a board that I'm necessarily any more comfortable today than I was then. That having been said, what they're attempting to do is to say, take soil removal that was not expressed in so many words at the public hearing and now either truck it off-site, which, which they would've had to do if they maintained the same special permit, or now what they'd like to do is not have to do that and simply just spread it out on the site. And they've chosen the northwest corner of the site to do it. It is the highest point of land on the property. Now they're raising it a couple of feet. I don't know that the elevation change is substantially different or in, really significant to the project. If I had to think about it in terms of the soil and what's being taken out, does it have, have the same characteristics as land that was not disturbed before? Because at the top of that soil, when you stump it, you've got a certain amount of loam and you've got the underlying sand and then you hit around two to three feet down, you hit that hard glacial till. That's still gonna be there. If they're removing glacial till and putting it on top of the mound and grading that out, now you've got the harder material sitting on top. They're still gonna be responsible for maintaining that, to keep it from eroding. They're gonna have to put some jute netting or something down to stabilize it, make sure that it doesn't erode both during the construction process as well as when the process is finished. So, that having been said, I don't have an awful lot to say about, about the changes. I will say one thing that I noted, and I don't recall that it came up as a matter of the original hearing. There's a note on this plan that says, along that fifty-foot strip which separates out their property, their construction from Gray Hill Mobile Home Park. Do you remember what we did down off Route twenty-five, Jim? When we looked at the trees and everything above forty feet they took out? That's gonna be done here too. So that there's a number of big trees that could possibly be taken out. They need to be determined as to which ones they are. And that was not a part of the original approval, as I recall it. There was some concerns about implementing vegetation along that side where there were some pretty good holes between there and where the people had their mobile home units.
I did hear them say that they had the fill hole, but I understand just that.
They're saying, they're saying they're filling the holes in the, where it's open. But I don't recall that under the original special permit, they were removing any trees within that fifty-foot buffer. Anything forty feet and above, according to this plan, they're gonna be taken out. So-
Correct, anything over forty feet?
Yeah, and that, that wasn't-
You need it for the angle of the sun.
That wasn't no, on the, I would have to look at them, but I believe that note was on the GAF plan and that was why the applicant, you know, for every tree that is removed over that height, they're gonna come back and plant three within the holes along that edge.
That's, that's fine, if it was, I looked quickly and I didn't have to see it, but that's okay. The only thing I'd suggest on that is what we decided when we were out there on the other site was instead of ripping out stump and all, leave the stump, cut it off at the stump and leave it there so you don't disturb the rest of the ground around it because you'll end up taking out a lot of other vegetation that's around the stump.
Yeah, that's reasonable.
Actually, that may cause a problem. These are ground screws, you can't take a ground screw there, they're specifically set in a certain place.
Talking about the buffer zone, buffer zone, not in your-
I thought we were talking about it in here, okay.
Outside of there, right.
My apologies.
So, I, I think that's reasonable and on top of that, there were, we were talking internally because, understanding how tree removal is a sensitive issue, we would certainly be willing to flag the trees that we anticipate removing them. And, you know, again, understanding the way the language is written, there's no specific spot where we need to replace it. We would even propose to flag the trees we wanna remove, put some stakes where we wanna replant. And if the board wanted to, we would certainly be amenable to a condition that any trees removed within that fifty-foot buffer zone would be stumped or removed in a manner so that we're not creating additional soil disturbance.
Stump would remain.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable request.
Charlie came up with that before and it, I, I think it's not only reasonable, I think it's
It makes-
less of a strain on you.
Yeah, absolutely, it's just less stabilization you're chasing, yep, absolutely.
Let me ask you a question, you can't lose that fill all the way down?
Well, yeah, so Charlie kinda hit on that when, you know, he mentioned that we're gonna be placing it. And so, you know, we, as the responsible party for the, the construction general permit under the NIPEDs program, are obligated to make sure that we adhere to certain standards from an erosion and sediment control. And so the thought was, if we limited it to the top of the hill, then we still had this area here where we're maintaining that existing vegetation and with some intermediate controls, just on the downside of where we're gonna be redispersing that material, it provides almost a, a buffer that we will, we will be the stewards of and keep clean. And that's just another line of protection to prevent it from going down into the existing ponds, ultimately, which, you know, Charlie mentioned on the site, he hasn't seen it over top that, but ultimately it does make it down to the Cranberry Highway. So, that was our thought of not evenly dispersing it across the whole site because that would be a challenge in and of itself from a stabilization standpoint. And so we really wanted to limit it, it was a balance. It's, how high do you wanna make it without, you know, potentially affecting some of the issues you folks brought up, but at the same time being able to quickly achieve stabilization and contain it? and contain it? And so that's kind of, you know, that's the area that we had decided.
I'd like to get some clarification on the purpose. I'm going back to my original question, the purpose of the fencing. And the reason that I really want to know is, my experience with other solar sites, the fencing and the plantings for buffer for visual effect were very important to residents. These solar farms or whatever you want to call them are allowed to go in residential areas, and it's a budding residence, budding a mobile home park. I don't know who showed up for the meeting. I didn't see any of the original plans. When I saw the original plans for another meeting that I was in, there were pictures, there was a lot of talk about what impact that's going to have. And when you raise that up two feet, that's going to have an impact. I don't know what that's going to be. What's the purpose of the fence? That's not to provide some kind of a visual relief, I guess, so to speak? I know it's obviously for safety, but I believe, if I can recall, it was also for a visual effect. And if you're raising everything two feet...
I mean, I don't think typically if you're dealing with a fence that's installed for a visual protection, you're going to see vinyl coating or possibly some slats, and this does not have that. So this fence is strictly from a security, safety standpoint.
Is this a wire fence, a chain link fence?
Chain link fence. Galvanized chain link fence.
This is the security that trees are for visual screening.
Exactly, yeah. And my experience, and I've done a lot of solar projects, is when the butters come out in force and screening is a concern, that's where you see a row of supplemental plantings, green giant arborvitae's deer resistant that grow quick, provide instantaneous screening, and that's not on this plan. And so again, you know, we weren't the permitting engineers. I don't, I didn't take the time to go back through the minutes, but, you know, I would surmise that if screening was a huge issue with the butters, that you would see some kind of supplemental screening here, and we don't. The fact that we're providing the full 50-foot, which is, you know, what we're required to provide, and then supplementing that on a three-to-one ratio as we're taking down selective trees from a screening standpoint, I don't know what, you know, I don't know what more we're, you know, required to do, if you will. And, you know, again, you know, my opinion is certainly, you know, my opinion, as you said, the candy bars, everyone has one, but, you know, I would just harken to Mr. Rowley's comment that, you know, the adjustment in the grade isn't significant in the scope of things, and certainly not from a visual perspective, especially considering the size of the mature trees that were, and the width that we're leaving on that, on the closest affected edge.
And so, what's the growing rate of the current trees that you're proposing to put there? How long does it take to get two feet higher?
I don't, I believe that, I don't think the species have been specifically selected. You know, again, it was written somewhat vague, and so, you know, again, that was an item that internally we were talking about, let's get this coordinated so that when we cut down some trees and spend all this money and plant them and go to get Mr. Rowley's sign-off, that we're all on the same page, that we're doing what the original decision intended us to do. And so if it's something where, you know, species will be, you know, the final planting layout or stakes be set in the field and species, you know, submitted for review and approval to the board and/or its designee, so that we're providing, instead of, you know, a Japanese maple or something like that, it's going to drop its leaves in the winter, we're providing something that coniferous, something year-round screening, you know, again, I think that's a reasonable request.
The two-foot difference in elevation, Veronica, won't make any difference to the people at Great Hill Mobile Home Park and what they see, because a 50-foot screen at this time of year is virtually no screen at all. I don't care where you go. 50 feet means nothing. What they're going to see out their back windows is solar panels. And the fact that the far end of it is a couple of feet higher is probably not going to be discernible. On the other side of this system...
It's not the entire thing, Charlie?
Pardon me?
It's not the entire grade that's two feet higher?
No, not the whole thing. Mostly in that upper corner, upper right-hand corner.
Okay, I misunderstood.
Gray Hill is all on the bottom of the plan.
Okay, okay.
See what that strip is along the bottom of the plan?
Yes.
They're on the bottom side of that strip. So what they're going to see is the panels that are closest to them, and they won't even be noticing any two-foot difference on the far end of this.
Okay.
And there is no residential use on the northwest side of this at all. That's the Wareham Fire District property back there. The only thing that's there is the water tank.
I guess the concern of the board, I personally, if you are budding in industrial or commercial, I would say build it to the property line. It doesn't faze me, but we do have to respect somehow the residential neighborhood.
Sure.
As much as we can. My opinion, like I said, we're not engineers here. We will go with Mr. Rowley's recommendation, and you have to work with him, my personal opinion. So as long as you guys can sort it out on the issue, I'm okay with it. The question to be asked tonight, before we go any further, do you guys believe it's a minor modification before we discuss more and everything? So, I mean, there's no sense if we, if it's major modification, it needs a public hearing. Do you believe it's a minor modification?
Minor.
Minor?
Minor.
Veronica, minor?
I would say minor.
I agree, it's minor. So let's proceed with minor. So we're still on the subject. Are you willing to work, Mr. Rowley, to sort this stuff out? It's not going to hold up your project. Come back on the 25th. You guys work out the details now, I mean, next couple of weeks or whatever.
Mr. Rowley's recommendation was that the board accept the Atlantic Design, that they become the plan of record.
We're okay with that, of course.
Well, just know that my letter was written on the 28th after the submission of the January 24th plan. The plan you have tonight is March 5th. So it's a different plan.
Okay.
The only difference is the change in the grading. That came after I wrote the letter.
Okay.
Again, I would still say it's in substantial compliance with the plan, and no matter whether the grade change is two feet or not, they're still responsible for erosion control both during and after construction. That's the most important thing, and the fact that this drainage system that they have adopted as their own is going to function. It's strictly on them that it happens.
You questioned whether it's going to work or not, and...
I did. I have a, I have a long history in that site of knowing what it looked like 50 years ago.
And you know adding two feet is going to put more, way more impact on that drainage. And I, as I understood last time, like, we agreed to, they put their stamp on it, and they believe it'll handle it. So you'll be responsible for that if the drainage does not take it.
Sure, absolutely. And we've looked at all the preliminary testing, dug some of our own, and for whatever it's worth, we've raised the site almost two feet in some areas, but we really limited it in the pond areas and only raised those a foot, understanding that we wanted to keep those as consistent with the original design as possible. And we're certainly willing to work with Mr. Rowley. I mean, you know, we want to be transparent and work with him.
So is the board, in this matter, I don't think we're holding them up. They're working every day. I go to Concord Electric all the time. Would you, you have a 53G account, right?
I don't know how much is in it right now.
Right, but you have to feed it if you need to.
Well, there's been nothing taken out for inspection yet.
Right.
There's something there for inspection anyway.
Does it make sense that Mr. Rowley reviewed the plans and come back on the 25th and we have more, or it doesn't matter to you?
I don't think there's any need for any further review, because I'm going to stick to my original letter which I wrote. And I don't see this as a change that substantially changes that. So I'm not concerned about it being a major or minor modification, just that the latest plans be reflected in the modification of the special permit, that the permit gets put on record, because at some point, your board or the building inspector, somebody is going to ask me for an inspection of the site and a final sign-off.
Right.
And as I explained on that site visit, if we didn't do this, what plan am I supposed to refer to when I do the final inspection?
Right.
That's why I asked that they come here and at least get their set of plans as being the plans of record, so it becomes a part of the public record and something that I can refer to later on.
All right. While we hear, anyone here in the audience against or in favor of this project?
I'd like some information.
Yes, sir. Mr. Menese, select Menese.
Jim in Ace 25, 26 Cranberry. How many yards of material you're going to pull off the site?
I'm sorry, what?
How many yards of material you're going to take off the site?
It's somewhere between 10 and 13,000 cubic yards.
Off the site.
Is what would we, is the material that we would not be able to use in the basins due to the overdig or underneath the road?
So 10 to 13,000 cubic yards?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not going off the site, though, Jim?
Well, that's what we're proposing.
Well, that's what I'm asking. What's coming off the site?
If you guys don't mind, will you dare like to answer to us just for the record?
Yeah, absolutely. So...
If you don't mind. You can, with all due respect, select Menese, just, you could answer.
Through you, through you then.
Do the question, you could answer us.
All right, so through the chair. Originally, if we weren't requesting this minor modification, we would have been required to remove from the site 10 to 13,000 cubic yards. One of the main reasons for this request for the minor modification is so that we no longer need to do that. We're going to, the material we're going to excavate out from the pond and beneath the road to get our subbase is going to be redispersed in the northwest corner of the site. And so the ultimate goal is that we would not have to truck off anything in a perfect world, and we would just be importing the sand and gravel mix that we would need within the basin areas themselves.
Select Menese.
So it's zero then, right?
Zero. Excuse me, select?
Correct.
That's what I want to know, how much you're going to take off, so if it's zero...
Zero, pretty much, yeah.
And through you again. When they send out the notifications to the butters, it goes to the owner of the property, not the residents that live there. So, one person or how many own the property would receive that, not the 150 residents.
We don't make the rules.
No, no, I'm just saying so.
I understand.
They might not get notice.
Right, keep in mind, these people are tenants, they come and go.
I understand that, and a lot of them lived there for a lot of years, so oftentimes you won't get the same turnout from the people because of this lack of notification. So I think it's incumbent upon the board to look out for whether they're tenants and/or home, landowners.
I think these are state rules, not even town rules.
I think we did have some tenants come that did live there, I think at the original.
Yeah, but select Menese is talking about the procedures.
No, 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 I understand.
Should we notify them or not, correct, select Menese?
No, no, just...
He's, I think, if I may, I think he's emphasizing that this board has to be the voice for the people who don't turn out to the meetings that make determinations on these types of builds. And I think we need to be cognizant of that, and that was one of the reasons why I am concerned with the rise of the elevation, in concern with, I wasn't a part of the original approval or I don't, whatever was done with the planning board, but I've sat in a couple of the panel discussions when it was presented before the board, and unless your butters basically fight tooth and nail, they're not, it's, unfortunately, it doesn't usually get built in an aesthetic way.
Excuse me, we can't go off the subject. Let's do this matter. We could discuss this matter, and with, after this, we can't mix, now we go way off the subject.
But this is, it's...
Let's specifically speak on this project.
Okay, pardon if I may say, that is the subject with the raising elevation.
No disrespect, we want to, we could discuss this matter, you want to, after this. We just, we don't want to go off the subject.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not requiring a whole lot of time here, but I do have opinion on this project, and he is coming to ask for a modification where my opinion matters.
Yes, of course.
I'm giving my opinion. Please give me the floor when I'm doing that.
Of course you can, but on this project, not on someone else.
It is on, well, I have, obviously, we all draw on our experience of previous projects to make determinations, which is why I mention it.
Okay.
So, my final words to you would be, I hope that you will take the residents into consideration, your butters, because visually, nobody wants to live beside a solar project. Raising it somewhat gives us, gives me a chance, because you're here for a minor modification, to make that emphasis to you, because I wasn't a part of the original one. So that would be my emphasis on whatever you're putting in for screening, do your best job that you can for the residents who have to live beside there. That's my point.
I totally agree. You know, totally agree with this. So, so that being said, I guess, you guys want to add anything?
No, I mean, I don't disagree with anything that has been said.
All right, so the matter before us, we have to vote to agree that the Atlantic Design Engineering are the engineer on records and the minor modification, and we have to somehow in the decision draft that they live up to the design standard that Mr. Rowley talked about.
You want to do a...
Well, I think all conditions of the original permit language is sufficient.
Does that make sense, Mr. Rowley?
All conditions of the original permit.
Well, oh, sure, you don't want to alter that in any way. What you're saying is by this is that the plan that's been proposed is not a substantial change from the original plan.
I'm just trying to find the date on it. March 5th, I believe?
January 24th. A date on the plan?
That's the bill, yeah, that's the bill, that was what was submitted for the building permit, the plan that is...
Did you revise those plans?
The January 24th plans, yes.
So these are your final plans, right? You want to...
Those should be March 5th.
The plan you want to be on record?
No, it's March 5th.
Okay.
These are the ones that were delivered to the office.
Yes, March 5th.
So there's no revision on here? There's no revision page?
Correct. That was the plan that was originally submitted with the building permit.
All right, so we need to put on the amendment or whatever, the minor modification on the revision dated March 5th?
Correct.
All right.
So do we need a motion to do this?
Yeah.
So, do we need...
I'll need a set of the plans as well.
Pardon me?
I'll need a set of the plans for the permit file as well.
So do we need to close the hearing first?
There's no hearing.
There's no hearing. So I'd like to make a motion that the board adopt the plans dated March 5th, 2020 by Atlantic Design, and they become the plan of record for the project, the special permit be modified to reflect the new plan, and all other conditions of the original plan become upheld.
Has anyone else want to add anything on that motion?
I'll check, I'll check with town council as to what should be filed.
Okay, good idea. Charlie, would you like...
If you could just make reference in light of Jim's motion, that a presentation was made that would change the grade in certain areas by not more than two feet.
On the upper left corner, upper north, wherever north is.
And that they will be supplanting trees removed against the buffer on Gray Hill with additional planting. At least those two things are a little bit different. So if you just mention that, at least it gives somebody ideas to what the difference was.
Sonia, if you don't mind adding Charlie's comment to the draft. All right, what else you guys would like to add? Okay.
And that a updated plan set will be delivered to the office before the permit is issued.
I had multiple copies, they were dropped with Sonia.
I'll check and see with Sonia.
If they're not, make sure they're dropped.
Sonia gave me this set and said this was the latest.
Okay, it was the same day I had them delivered to Charlie. I delivered one set to Charlie.
You just make sure they're there, we're not going to...
Yep, absolutely.
All right, so that motion done by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Good luck, we'll give you credit.
All right. On the other businesses and discussion, if we may, Mr. Menese, can you, do you mind?
What's that?
Can we ask you a few questions? We could discuss the other matter now, if you want.
Cut you off.
Sure. I didn't mean to cut you short, but we'd like to stick on the subject so we don't go off.
No problem at all.
So just before we go forward, I do agree totally, I understand with Veronica, but in the board, we'd like to, we don't, people get excited, I do understand, but we'd like but we'd like to stick on the subject and we appreciate her comments and everything. So going back to your subject, I totally understand. However, like I said, it's the state rules, not even town rules, that you notify the landowner, so...
Right, as long as you're cognizant of that as a board and you take that into consideration, because they, there's a good chance, I've seen this a number of times and I...
Okay.
And I saw how many people showed up. And for the number of people who are going to butt a solar field, that would reflect to me that they weren't notified directly, as we know they weren't. Well, an assumption on my part, I don't know that. Because I've seen other installations where people are very vocal. Because of the visual impact, the visual impact.
I was fortunate, unfortunate, and I had the opportunity to chat with a couple of people on Timber Lane, which is Great Hill's way, the closest to butters. And the two or three that I spoke to were so relieved to find out that it wasn't going to be an industrial building or a commercial building.
That's great.
And, you know, so there has been some scuttlebutt, so that's not like they're going to wake up some morning and be surprised, oh my, they're building, they do know, but they probably, like you say, they probably haven't been notified when they have the opportunity to come here.
And we look at minimums, we look at minimums. And I think as Charlie indicated, not to put words in your mouth, that in the winter, 50 feet basically is nothing. If you don't have, you know, decid, I mean, if you don't have evergreens and you have the leaves falling off the trees. So, you know, it's what the laws, bylaws state, so that's what we have to go by. But also...
So you're talking about procedure matters and procedures you're discussing?
Well, the procedure in...
Are you speaking specifically on this project or in general procedure?
In general.
I understand, like, again, but we don't make...
So I do have a question, because, so the state laws, as I understand them, are pretty, they do give towns the ability to place more requirements on the solar panel facilities. And I just, and I, actually, one of the things I have on my folder is for bylaw changes regarding solar panels, that we need, that needs to become a discussion so that we can create some additional requirements based on what we want to see
That's correct.
with the solar panels. And we can use other towns' bylaws that they're implementing as, you know, maybe...
You could do this, you could come up with an idea or change in law, put it in writing, we'll discuss it here. Ken, we'll put it in writing, present it to the planning board, they're the one who could put it on the warrant. We can put it on the warrant.
Right.
And it takes its course. And hopefully, we'll see in next town meeting, you could start this procedure by, like, as we go, you know how we change the bylaws?
Yes.
We recommend, we don't change.
Yeah, yeah, because we...
Setback and stuff. And like I said, last time, we did a few things. Ken brought them to the planning board, the planning board decided on some, went against some, and they're the one who puts it on the warrant. And if it goes, you could suggest 200 feet buffer for solar panel. The town accepted, the planning board go for it, and it goes before the body, it's 200 feet. So that's how it works. You have to come up with, bring it, and we discuss it here and we could present it. You could present anything, I guess.
One thing that's been kind of overlooked, I guess, is what you're talking about, so...
Mike's love, Jake.
I think 50 feet is good, but if you, that's my opinion, but you guys want to change it to 500 feet? It's 500 feet if it passes.
If you're trying to go south to get into warmer weather in the winter, 50 feet is nothing.
Right. But anyway, procedure matter, we don't, like I said again, it is what, I mean, you understand.
And why I question the materials being removed, anything over X amount of yards triggers a requirement for material removal permit.
Right.
And that's why I inquired about that. And I think the town gets a whopping quarter a yard or something. Am I correct, Mr. Buckland?
Sound like that.
So...
Earth's removal permit?
Yeah, and that, I believe, does that come through the selectmen? Who grants that? So, and I never see anybody come for that. So, you know, 10,000 to 13,000 yards, I mean...
A lot of quarters.
Take a few hundred bucks and put it in a...
Cranberry guys can move dirt around pretty freely.
Well, it's...
But when they start doing gravel pitting and, you know...
Solar arrays?
Then it's another whole, pardon me, solar arrays?
If they sell it.
Full of voltaic arrays?
Yeah.
If they're selling the...
If they're selling the material, now it becomes a mining operation, and that's different. If they're moving, if Cranberry guy's moving dirt, moving material because it's part of his farming, he's good.
It's acceptable.
It's acceptable. If they're doing it under the guise of farming and somebody's saying, hey, wait a minute, you know, that's a million yards you've moved over to Randolph from Wareham, that's not farming.
Thank you, and I'm going to, no comment on that.
There's probably a lot of other things that could be considered with respect to your solar panels too. Only state, the state says you have to allow it. And you cannot set up unreasonable regulations, is what it essentially says.
I'm hypothetically speaking, I mean, you could present anything if it's acceptable by... Remember, everything approved by town warrant has to go to Attorney General. He might say it's no good and it dies.
But there are a lot of other things, like, we discussed one particular one with the planning board. It was a vertical visualization that impacted neighbors. Whereas changes in elevation can do that. Some places, like, there was one particular project that we did over off of County Road, which your board approved, it was in a sand pit.
Yeah.
And it was essentially broad grade. You go by there today and you can hardly see it. There's a few transformers out on their access road, and that's all. In that particular case, the abutting owners are right up against it. But again, they preferred that to a residential development in their backyard. Nevertheless, that whole project is depressed and you don't see it. Whereas there are other places, like you go to Toby Road and it's right in your face. So there are a lot of things...
There was one over Hathaway Street too. Was that one off Hathaway?
Yeah, Hathaway, it's off of a little small cul-de-sac.
Behind Shaw's, actually.
Yeah, that was one of the first ones. But there are things like, you know, requiring, in a case where you're up against a residential area, like you're talking about Veronica, where it could be that the visual screening needs to be increased. So it gives a better buffer. Or if you can't get the density with depth, you require that it be supplemented by other kinds of plantings in order to maintain that depth when this time of year when the leaves go. But there are other things too that you can suggest as a part of the whole bylaw that we don't see. Just having a minimum isn't necessarily the answer to everything. In a lot of places, the minimum works, other places it doesn't. One that we did, Jim remembers, is the one I was talking about on Route 25. Fortunately, fortunately, the slope there off of Route 25 and the trees that are left on the slope are enough of a buffer that on my way down toward Buzzards Bay, when I go that way a lot, I always look over there. You can see the very beginning of it and that's it. The rest of it is behind that van.
You've got to know where to look, too.
You've got to know where to look. But if you're not looking for it, you don't see a thing. Whereas if you go in the back of it and go into the site, you say, oh my gosh, look at all the panels. There's what, 30,000 panels in there? In three different sites? It's a big one. So it all depends on the location and whose side of it is to what you should implement to... I think you're right, protecting the neighbors is an important thing. They're not the most sightly things to have next to you.
Well, we can't have the pioneer too.
You know, it's interesting, recently, I had, I've been involved with a couple of properties that are exploring solar.
Is there a check on it?
The comment, there was a negative comment made about 70% of our energy being produced by coal. It didn't seem right to me, so I did some research. 60-some percent of our energy comes from fossil fuels, all fossil fuels, including natural gas. And of that, 23% still comes from coal. But what was real interesting to me is the amount of our national energy produced by renewables is still only 1%.
Yeah, I think it's going to be for a long time.
1%.
So that means that there's a lot more, there will be a lot more solar panel projects before us and we need to take action so that we're not a day late and a dollar short, which we have been, whatever else has already gone through. But moving forward, it'd be nice to have some...
But, yeah, I agree with you. My personal opinion is that the cost of solar panels and the technology are going to advance exponentially and that it's going to, new home construction, it's going to be almost frivolous not to build a solar roof on your house. And I'd say within 15 or 20 years, fossil fuel, BP already knows it, they know oil is dead. It's done.
No, it's not dead.
It's dead.
You can't run your, run your car on nothing. What's going to lubricate the wheel bearings?
I'll tell you what, it ain't going to be $80 a barrel to...
It's 34 today.
It isn't, it's 30 something now.
Did it go $4?
34, the lowest in 30 years.
It was 30, yes, yesterday I went to...
It's not going to go away right away.
Not going to go away completely. We still need to make more plastic. The ocean has got lots more room in it.
My opinion, there's room for all kinds of energy sources, not just one or two.
In 1967, there was a movie called The Graduate, and the guy said, plastics. You know, where are we now with plastics? That was Dustin Hoffman, 1967, predicting plastics for the future.
I guess we all use plastic and fuel and everything.
Right now, there's more plastic in the ocean than there are fish.
Yeah. All right, anyway, we want to, we have a Mr. Sample here tonight, would like to meet. Mr. Sample, want to come forward? This is Mr. Richard Sample. He's applying to be in the zoning board.
We've got two that are applying.
I did, I did read his application, not that we make a decision, but I guess the zoning board did ask us...
I'm Richard Sample, 194 Hathaway Street.
All right, just briefly let us know what you do and why you want to be in the zoning board so we could send a recommendation.
What I am is a carpenter, I'm a subcontractor. So I get work from the big companies and things like that, and I stay pretty busy. And the reason to come onto the board would be to help the town. And I'm getting older and I figured it's something I should do, is being involved with the town and see if I can help out.
And you're willing to come every other Wednesday? Of course, if there's an emergency or things you can...
Absolutely.
Because we desperately need some members and thank you for doing that. Somebody would like to ask Mr. Sample something?
I know that Rick has lived in Wareham all your life, Rick? Yeah?
You know, so that's a good thing. Jimmy?
We chatted a little bit before the meeting. I'm all set.
So should we throw him to the curb or say yes?
I think we should say yes, we need more members so I can take a break once in a while.
No, no breaks, no breaks, we're still five. No breaks. Yeah, I know, I call him every week, you better show up, all of you, you better show up except Jim. So, all right, yeah, we're glad, I mean, we're just going to send just like a couple of words to the selectmen so they could move forward next Tuesday, Mr. Manis? Okay? And hopefully, you come aboard and thank you. You help us a lot.
Do I go to the meeting on Tuesday night or do I just wait?
No, no, you should go because the selectmen might want to ask you a few questions because they're the one who appoint you and not us. Our words mean nothing, but it helps, you know?
I'll be at the meeting.
Right, and then after you get appointed, you got to go to the clerks and get sworn in because you can't sit with us if you don't get sworn in. And she'll give you, you have to do some, like, study, quick studying on ethics and you have to sign some stuff, she'll walk you through it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I do have one question for the applicant. Any thoughts on tonight's meeting?
I was with you, I completely think that we should have some kind of a deeper screen or an evergreen screen fencing, whatever. Because, I mean, they do, they're going to be just putting them in everywhere. Not to say that, you know, the value of trailer parks compared to a residential house is, you know, of value. But I do believe that they should try to condense them and keep them unseen all the way through until they're done with them. But I am with you on, I think the 50-foot buffer zone, I wouldn't go any more than that, but I would like to see it denser if they could, you know, work on it.
Okay, thanks.
We're all with you. All right, okay, I guess you guys all recommend? Yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would greatly appreciate it.
We don't know if you're any good for, you've been sitting on the board for three months.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Sample.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything you guys would like to add for tonight, except...
Make a motion to adjourn?
Veronica's comment?
Second that.
Motion to adjourn, second by you, all in favor, say aye.
Jake, get back in the door.
Yes, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.